Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and bring us back, please.
Hello, my name is Carlin, and I am Black American resident at the Amtrak. I don't know that what I have to say is gonna help or change anything, but I choose to be there by choice. I have many options. I could go to and live in and everything else, but my number one need is a safe, comfortable place to lay my head, and you're taking that away from me, and possibly putting me in a worse situation, or, you know, and causing me more difficulties than my situation already is. With no means of where these... It said 25 people. There's about 50 campers down there right now, and most of them... It is transitional living, yes, but they have nowhere to go, and it's just going to displace them into other parts of the city and cause more problems for them and for you guys. I don't know what the solution might be, but it would be nice to have, I think, some sort of land that we can have a primitive camping site on. There would have to be, of course, rules and other regulations, whereas down there, there's not, such as the big problem is the trash, you know, and the buildup, I think. I don't know. You guys see us as the problem, and I don't think that's actually the factor. You know, I'm not sure exactly what you guys... What the problem is. I don't want stable housing. I don't want to be in a house. I don't want four walls around me. I love being outside. I love living in nature. The river is absolutely beautiful watching the sunrise. I've learned so much in this lifestyle. I wouldn't change it for a minute. I live outside sociable norms, and I'm okay with that. I've never fit in, and it's nice to have a place where I can go where I feel like I am somewhat at home, because I am accepted and I am loved. But people wouldn't understand that because they've never been there or done that. They think that they had to be successful. You have to go to work every day and have a job and have a house and all this and everything else, and I don't think that's necessarily true to be successful. I love helping people and I help a lot of people down there. Just as there are undesirables within my community, there are also the golden stars who make a difference. I don't really know what else to say, so I'm gonna go ahead, but thank you.
So, earlier, when I was talking about all the roads and stuff, I wasn't. I was talking about the homeless. I tricked you guys. It was crazy how I do that. All joking aside, the closure of the camp, I don't think is a benefit to the larger plan of trying to reduce homelessness within Lawrence. If I had to spitball a plan, I would try to target the smaller, further-away camps from jobs as well as just services and such. Make sure that they're able to get into shelter, make sure that they're able to get those opportunities, and larger camps that have resources kind of centralized already at them would survive up until the city has a means by which to house these people or give them programs that allow them to have at least shelter. That's my idea. This current plan, my worry is that it's going to be a bit of a repeat of kind of the North Lawrence Camp, Camp New Beginnings, wherein which we displace these people. Some of them end up housed. Some of them have shelter services as those open up, but plenty just end up displaced. And that displacement doesn't benefit them towards getting out of unhousedness. It doesn't help them reach neither our goals nor their goals. And so for me, it's a situation where we're creating a lot of lose-lose situations, where I think the city should be trying to find win-win situations, where how can we meet our goals while at the same time meeting their goals at the same time? And that's why, that's the biggest reason, I think, in my head, why we should postpone at least the closure of the Amtrak camp. The next camp that would be closest would be Berchem, and I think the city has expressed as much in saying that many people will end up going there. Berchem is behind a gate that vehicles can't get to. Activists that try to go down there to offer services have to go through quite a hike just to get there, which means that services, just by kind of the inevitable... Not like, in the same way that you paywall anything, less people are going to come to it. If you make really any wall around something, just less services will get to it, and that's the difficulty around it. I stand with my unhoused friends. I stand with them in that we shouldn't be closing Amtrak. I see my time dwindling, and so my hope is that we can at least postpone it now until we have a better plan that is all-encompassing, that can address the people that will be displaced with this more than the current plan that's been proposed. I know one of you are interested in this goal and fighting for this cause, and just I hope that you guys can commit to it and get to the promise of what we're all trying to...
Time. Hello, I'm Alka Meuronoke. I learned recently that a policy is being adopted of deporting unhoused people who can't prove Douglas County residency for the past 12 months. Apparently, Lawrence doesn't have the bandwidth to provide services to these people. And yet, Lawrence has the bandwidth to spend $30 million a year on a bloated police department. In a city where there are three empty homes for every homeless person according to census data, the problem isn't bandwidth. The problem isn't bandwidth when a shelter worker told me that because of this policy, they have had to turn people away when there were empty beds for them. This isn't about resources. It's about who the people in power in this city serve. It's about which class they serve. And the class they serve is not us, the workers and the vast masses of people. It's the bankers, the landlords, and business owners, the parasitic capitalist class. This is not a bug. This is a feature of capitalism. As long as housing remains under the control of private landlord and developer ownership, we're going to keep having to fight this fight. We'll feel like those 80-year-old women who fought for their abortion rights in the 60s only to have to march to the Capitol again in the past few years. As long as the housing, economy, and government are all in the hands of the wealthy capitalist class, we're going to keep spinning on this hamster wheel. Under capitalism, where things necessary for the survival of human beings are commodities to be bought and sold, where land, housing, healthcare, newspapers, and other means of production are owned privately by a handful of rich capitalists and not by the masses of people, where the massive profits of the rich capitalists necessarily come at the expense of the continued immiseration of the very workers who built their immense wealth, we're going to keep on having these problems. In the short term, to save lives today, we must force these cruel policies to be repealed, and we must fight like the generations before us have fought for reforms to this heartless system, to stop the sweeps and provide every human being with the barest minimum of shelter. In the long term, we must study, we must unite, and we must realize socialism. That has historically been the most effective and most permanent solution to these problems of poverty and insecurity of the vast masses of people. Revolution has been done before, and it will, it can, and it must be done again. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Marissa. I have lived and worked in Lawrence for just over two years now. I'm here today to implore the City Commission to not forcibly sweep the Amtrak on October 15th. The Amtrak camp is home to approximately 25 of our neighbors, and some people have been residents of this camp for several years now. Others are relatively new residents because they came to Amtrak from New Beginnings when it was closed within the last year. Sweeping Amtrak without a plan that includes accessible and permanent housing beyond shelter beds and sending away those who cannot prove their Douglas County residency after three business days' worth of services is insufficient, especially considering all of the obstacles that can be in the way for both housed and unhoused people from obtaining IDs and other government documents that would establish their identity or their proof of residency. Today, a written public comment was submitted containing a petition to stop the sweep on Amtrak. Since submitting that petition, when it was submitted, it was just under 200. We have over 200 signatures on that now from Lawrence community members who agree that they do not want to see the city move forward with this sweep, and not until at least all the... Until we have resources for everybody that's there. Lawrence prides itself in being an inclusive community with big-city attractions, yet maintaining that small-town hospitality that is hard to come by in bigger cities. What is hospitable about forcibly displacing our neighbors while we're giving them no better alternatives for housing? Sweeping Amtrak will not make our unhoused neighbors disappear, and it will not do anything to address the systemic causes that are at play. Accessible Permanent Housing Agency, healthcare, and mental health services would all be more effective and compassionate ways to address the needs of our unhoused neighbors. We see the good publicity measures you are trying to take as a response to your constituents rightly applying pressure on you to not do this. Offering support only once the pressure starts building on you guys, when you could have been doing this, you know, for the whole time, that honestly is... It's incredibly disappointing, and I also think it's incredibly shameful. Again, we do implore you to make the correct decision and come back with a realistic plan for where people are going to go that's not a shelter bed before proceeding with any more sweeps.
Time.
Thank you.
I'm gonna supplement her, and I'm gonna donate my public comment time tonight to the cause of the homeless people here in town who have been begging for your support and the proper kind of support for years and have not received it. Those are the other 92 signatures in the last couple of days that add to the 200-plus that's on the online petition.
Hello, everyone. I am about 22 years old, and I've lived in Lawrence for about just as long, a little under. And if I were to sum up the actions taken by this city and the local legislation of this city, I would choose the word hypocrisy. The criminalization of vagrancy or homelessness or being unhoused or being unemployed began in 1866 when Virginia made it illegal for individuals to be unemployed or unhoused for, I believe the number is three months. This was a law targeted to essentially re-enslave black people who had been freed, just recently freed, by the Emancipation Proclamation. All structures of anti-homeless architecture, anti-homeless legislation, anti-homeless sentiment has built off of this racist structure. My entire time that I've lived here in Lawrence, I have heard people advocate for diversity. I've heard people advocate for looking after those who are vulnerable in our population. I've heard people try to say that we are uplifting diverse voices in our community, and by shutting down homeless shelters or homeless encampments in town, you are silencing those people and you are inconveniencing them. One does not need a house to have a home. One does not need to partake in the predatory landlord shit y'all have going on to live a sustainable lifestyle. I have seen Lawrence, one over and over again, push back against national legislation. We push back against legislation pertaining to marijuana use by making possession a $1 charge. We push back against the legislation of SB 180 that prevented people from using breastrooms that aligned with their gender. However, we have seen no pushback from the Supreme Court decision to essentially say that homelessness and being in a camp and a tent can be made illegal. The recent Supreme Court decision said that vacating someone from their tent or being unhoused is not considered cruel and unusual punishment under the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution. And if Lawrence wants to escape this culture and reputation of hypocrisy that it has been building for itself its entire time, you need to move away from disenfranchising, unhousing, making people more vulnerable, and erasing the voices of the diverse community that lives here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tristan, coming up again, and I make it a purpose, a point, to engage faithfully with the organizations we live with, the governments we live under. And when I engage with the happenings with the houseless people at Amtrak, I don't see a purpose. I don't see where the city has a plan for them afterwards. I don't see where the city has even put in a whole ton of effort. We had an event, not we, the city has put on an event today, and they did help a lot. They had showers, they had laundry. They even had some resources that they could get connected with, and we love that. Everyone here loves it and is in support of it. But the last time that happened was June, and none of the resources they provide actually solve the problem and the problems they face. We need actual solutions that will help us in the long term, getting these people out of the streets, getting them out of camps. We want that. We want them to have safe, sustainable, secure housing. And in the long term, getting them into that housing is cheaper on the city overall. I get running a city is about compromise. I get that we don't live in a world where everyone can get what they need all the time, right exactly when they need it. There's some bureaucratic bloat that happens with everything. But there's no... I don't see the perspective that justifies the actions the city is taking. I don't see the city making a good faith, good-hearted effort to help these people out of homelessness or at least into temporary housing, because a lot of these people, they don't even qualify for the shelters in town. They don't qualify for the other resources that really make a big difference. I'm hoping that things change in the next couple of months. The sweep is planned for October 15th, as I'm sure you know, and we have a lot of time. We can do a lot of good before then. We could even cancel the sweep. Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a lovely evening, and I hope you think about what we have said here today.
Hi, my name is Rowan Shering. I am a Lawrence resident, and I have come to ask you to not sweep the Amtrak camp. I don't think that sweeps like this are... They're not evidence-based. They don't help the people that we are claiming that we would be helping by doing it. And I don't have a lot of faith at this point that we can get everyone into a better situation than they are at Amtrak by October 15th. I... Not even everyone who was at the last camp has gotten into a better situation by now, so it seems like the way that this is going, we're just gonna be displacing people down into smaller and smaller areas. And I think it would make more sense to just focus our resources on helping the people there so that they are leaving because they are in a better situation and not because they're being forced out for fear of... For fear of being arrested or having their possessions destroyed. So, I'd just like to ask you to consider that, especially in light of how October is just when it's starting to get cold during the year, and we had somebody passed away from hypothermia outside in October last year, and I just don't think it's a good time to start displacing people, anyway. I do appreciate that there is substantially more warning this time for a sweep or a closure, if there's going to be one than there has been in the past. That is good, because it helps people prepare for it, but I also think that it isn't something necessarily that should happen at all. But again, I do appreciate that there is notice for it when it does happen this time, or substantial notice, like more than a month. So, please... Come at this with a plan first, and then maybe it can be closed when there's nobody there because they've gotten into a better situation and not because they're being forced out. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Justin Spees. At the October 11th, 2022 city meeting, I talked during general public comment about financial concerns that affect the people, and Mayor Courtney Shipley stopped me numerous times for supposedly not talking about items germane to the business of the City Commission. She then had me removed from the meeting by law enforcement after I called her a Nazi. Last I checked, Nazis don't allow free speech, so calling her a Nazi is the truth, like it or not. I have a lawsuit filed against the city over this. At that meeting, I had briefly mentioned the words "inflation" and "rent prices." Shipley interrupted me multiple times and stopped me from speaking because she said that the city has no control over inflation or rent. In the city's motion to dismiss my lawsuit, you allege that, quote, "The policy restriction that speech cannot be disruptive and must be relevant to the business of the City Commission are reasonable and viewpoint-neutral." Solely based on the factual allegations and plaintiff's complaint, these constitutionally permissible restrictions were simply enforced against plaintiff for violating these policies. For example, at the October 11th, 2022 meeting, plaintiff called Shipley Nazi numerous times and was warned that his speech was not germane to the business of the commission, close quote. Questions for you. Michael just called Mayor Littlejohn a Nazi during his public comment time and was not stopped or removed from the meeting. How does him calling you a Nazi not violate the city's supposed policy on disruptive speech? Why is he allowed to call you that, but when I say it, I'm removed from the meeting? If it's considered disruptive when I say it, then it also has to be disruptive when others say it. Conversely, if others can say it, then I can certainly say it too. That's a violation of my right to free speech, and it's also discrimination and retaliation against me. Also interesting about the city's defense in the lawsuit is that you all claim that rent is not germane to the business of the City Commission, and therefore that justifies you stopping me from speaking about rent. But at the December 6th, 2022 meeting, five months after I was removed from the meeting for talking about rent, Speaker Kevin Elliott speaks during general public comment and says, quote, "Rent, food, and transportation often makes up 50% to 70% of low-income households' budgets, yet outpaces inflation," close quote. He's allowed to talk about rent and inflation, two topics I was denied to speak on by Mayor Shipley and the commission. Another speaker, Alex Busicki, says she wishes to see, quote, "A better balance of power between landlords and tenants," close quote. At the December 13th, 2022 meeting during general public comment, Speaker Catherine Christian says she found out landlords charge a service fee of $50 to $100 for a background check, plus $80 for application fee totaling $300 to apply for a place to live, and then said, and then she said, quote, "I'm just asking the commission to do something about these landlords." Questions for you. Why were these people allowed to talk about rent when you claimed to have no control over it? Why are they allowed to talk about landlords? Do you control landlords? How is what they said any different than what I tried to say at the October 11th, 2022 meeting? If it's germane for them when they say it, then it has to be germane when I say it. Conversely, if it's not germane for me when I say it, then it cannot be germane for them when they say it. That's called discrimination. How is this considered an objective standard of germane to the business of the city? How am I supposed to know what's allowed to be said in here when people other than me are allowed to talk on the exact same topics, using the exact same words as I did, but you all say I couldn't talk on those items and then had me removed from the meetings for doing so? It seems subjective to me, and that subjectivity leads to your discrimination against me.
Hello, my name is Knife. I work with multiple mutual aid organizations in my city. I've been doing this for almost a year now and have really enjoyed getting to meet all the people and pets there. We got the news about the Amtrak closure several weeks ago, and it just felt like a huge slap in the face. You guys did the same thing last year with the North Lawrence Camp Tent City. A friend of mine who works as a 911 operator noticed an increase of suicide calls since the sweep began. We are currently in a housing crisis. I have to ask, why do you keep doing this to people just trying to survive? Also, I'd like to add that if you guys actually cared about the Cal Kansas River, then you would make ICL stop dumping its phosphorus wastewater into our river instead of going after the people in poverty. I'm currently a geology student, and what Israel Chemical's LTD is doing to the water is way worse than whatever the homeless could ever do. I also know there are many indigenous unhoused people at that camp because of high school, and honestly, they have way more excuses to be there than all of us. Thank you.
I'm Hazel Sylvester. I'm a resident of Lawrence, and I plan to be a lifelong resident. I currently attend KU. I want to live in the Lawrence that cares about the people who live in it. All of the people, including the people who live down at the Amtrak station. I'm human, and I care, and I'm not any less human than I was when I was a child in a homeless family. You have just as much obligation to the residents of that camp as you have to any of the other residents of this city, if not more, due to their vulnerability and the history and current abuse of the homeless. If camp sweeps worked, you would not be sweeping two years in a row. This sweep is not a solution. It is a punishment, and you are punishing these people who have nowhere else to go. If they had somewhere to go, you would be taking them there, but you aren't. You're dumping them outside of the city after you feed them for three days. That is not a solution. You are punishing these people. We demand that sweeps be stopped until these people have access to housing. Our unhoused neighbors who live in Amtrak and rely on that camp, they deserve housing, the way everyone else deserves housing, because life is a human right. Along with this, our second demand is that the city provides transparency and accountability for their choices that are affecting the lives of so many vulnerable people. You are welcome for our time and civic engagement. You are not welcome to do whatever you please with the lives of the unhoused.
Hello, my name is Sadie Nysley. I've been a resident of Lawrence for over a year, and I plan on being a resident of Lawrence for as long as I can. I would like to reiterate our demand that the sweeps be stopped until accessible permanent housing is provided for those who would be affected by the sweep, and the city commits to transparency and accountability. I am incredibly disappointed in the treatment of our unhoused neighbors here in Lawrence and would like to make it clear that myself and many others will be unrelenting in our support for this community. You're welcome for our time and civic engagement. You are not welcome to do with the lives of the unhoused as you please.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I just wanna give a quote. "Sleep is a necessity, not a crime." That's from Justice Sotomayor in regards to the Supreme Court decision about outside camping and sleeping, I guess. And I just, I'm gonna ask again, are the liberal justices wrong about their decision that camping bans are cruel and unconstitutional? And the conservatives, they're the ones that are right? If so, were the liberal justices also wrong in their decision that a woman should have a constitutional right to an abortion? After all, if forcing someone not to sleep is okay for the government to do, why shouldn't it be okay to also force women to give birth? I don't understand. How can one be right but the other wrong? Call me crazy, but I think it is wrong to force someone to give birth or go to jail. Just the same way, I think it's wrong to force someone to not sleep or go to jail. So I say the liberal justices are right when it comes to human rights and not the conservatives. And some of y'all are Democrats. So I, I don't understand how you're just all going along with the conservative justices. And I have another question. Is Amber Sellers pooping, or does she just not want to hear from the advocates tonight? She's supposed to be the progressive, but here's the unhoused, the unhoused community is here tonight speaking their minds, and she can't be bothered to come out and listen to them. I, I just think it is, it is very disappointing that this is the second week in a row she can't be bothered to come out to listen to public comment. And tonight's the night, you know, where the unhoused are dependent on her. I mean, she is supposed to be the progressive one, and I wanna, I wanna quote something. I look back at her social media. This is a quote about an Arizona Supreme Court making an abortion, or I guess banning abortion in Arizona. And her, her response to that is, it's never been about protection. It's about suppression and control. I say that's the same thing that's going on tonight with you cracking down on the homeless encampments here. It's not, it's not about protection. It's about control and power over them. Thank you.
Uh, my name's Autumn Colbeth. I have been a resident of Lawrence for about four years now. I am a graduate from KU. And my degree specifically was in ecology, evolution, and organismal biology. And I would also like to echo what my friend Naeif said. If you are actually wanting to care about the Cal River, why did you just build a bridge over it? We have been finding that the tires are rubbing off in particles. And when it gets into the water and reacts with ozone, it is toxic to fish life. Why are we having a whole bridge over the Cal River if it is going to be toxic to our fish? That is going to be much more detrimental on a multi-level scale compared to anything that the people there at the houseless, like the unhoused camp would ever do. I am disappointed that this is now the second time I have had to come to all of you and remind you that you are all, maybe not all of you, because I noticed that some of you do get quite a nice salary. Most of us here are one bad paycheck away from being houseless. It's simple as that. And I have to remind you, you also apply to that. Whether it's a tornado, whether it's a fire, anything. You can lose your house, and then thankfully for you, you'll most likely have someone to stay with. A family member, a friend. But what if you don't? Where will you go? For me, when I was kicked out of my mom's house when I was 17, it was to an abusive relationship. Because it was either that or it was live in my car. I chose the abusive relationship. All of you need to remember that these are Lawrence residents. They are a part of this community. Whether you believe that their tent out there is or isn't their home is a different matter. But it is their home to them, and by doing this sweep, you are taking their home. And again, as one of my other friends echoed, in October, when it is getting cold, I volunteered at warming shelters last winter. The churches were filled up. The shelters were filled up. Some people couldn't even go there. And now they're also going to lose again access to their house. I wish that all of you would at least reconsider and replan something else. Thank you.
David Baston. I did, yeah, it's kinda strange how Amber just left out again. It's two, two meetings in a row. Obviously, she doesn't care about what the citizens have to say. So I guess I'll be the first one to, whoever runs against her, I'll put up the first $500 against her just because she shows what she's all about right there. I do appreciate, Craig's always, I mean, he probably has the option to leave like everybody else, but he is always here and he, he does listen to everybody. So I do appreciate that in him and all you guys too. Wow. It is kinda strange how some things like they were saying, and I, I've been through to a lot of the meetings, and some people do say certain things and they're not called out. And then other folks are always called out on things. So there is discrimination that goes on. And I don't know what needs to be done about that. Obviously, we have a lawyer on the board too. I'm sure he's not in that specific law. But we really need to watch out how we discriminate against people. If one person's allowed to speak on something, yeah, I know what you were telling him was, all he had to do was say one thing basically about the report, and it probably would have been fine. But I mean, it's, it's three minutes. I mean, is it worth being sued over three minutes of comment? I wouldn't think so, but yeah. Yeah. I did have something to say on the, I showed up late. So on the quasi judicial item about moving some piece of property from single dwelling to multiple dwelling, I am gonna be keeping track of all those that you do. Because I know everybody comes up here and talks about Thomas Fritzl, about the property that we own out there getting changed, the zoning changed. So if you're gonna do that for certain people, I've got a big pile of stuff when he does, which he didn't want that rezoned that I know of when we talked about. So I don't know if the city's doing that or what, but there, I mean, if, he didn't say anything about it. But if we do happen to do that and he wants it, I'll be the first with the lawsuit on that too. Thank you.
All right, Sherry, any online?
Cheryl Lynn Wells. I don't know if you realize there are no shelters in Jefferson, Wyandotte, Johnson County, or Franklin County. I mean, I think that's one reason why we have more of a problem here. I have nothing against Christians. I think what I said was poorly phrased. I have absolutely nothing against Christians. I think sweeping the camp when you have no real solution for them doesn't really solve anything. Because we all know there is not enough shelter here for everybody. I don't know why the Amtrak camp has been picked out when actually it is closer to the meals, closer to the homeless resource center, and closer to something that might actually help them. I, I think that Lawrence should be an accepting town and setting example for other people. Thank you.
That's all the comments, Mayor.
Okay, I will bring it back to us. And that is last item on the agenda, so entertain a motion.
Move adjourned.
Second. First and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is four approved and one absent. You're adjourned. Good night, everybody.